Where else should we get started with this? And let's start with the ministries and I have it all filled out. Ronnie and I, we're not over it.
Do you want to skip the revenue, the first two pages?
Yeah, I just started administration and...
So, did we get a digital copy of that?
Yes.
Um...
Which one?
Where is that?
Uh, last month. So, you said go through it.
Everybody ready?
Did you find it?
No.
So, you go to...
I have the old data.
You go to February's, um...
The clerk thing?
Clerk thing.
Okay.
And then it says budget workshop 2025.
Remember any?
Mm-hmm. What if a nice... Should we have printed copies of them till we should then?
Do you want to write the numbers in it as I read them off?
You want to go get his copies real quick?
Because I don't know, I can't, we can't add.
Yeah.
I guess you can, but it's going to be kind of a...
Well, and it...
When it gets done, I have to add.
What we do is, and then next month I'll print out, I'll make the changes that we agree on, and then I'll print it out and...
That's right, I get that, but sometimes even for us to even see it now to where we can sit there and look back and forth, it might be easier.
Okay.
We had a hard copy? We had a hard copy?
I, I knew.
They have a copy.
Not a problem. It won't take long.
Yeah. Oh, what's the last one?
Yeah, there is a way to add to them, but it takes forever to try and type the numbers in.
Okay.
That's small.
Well, that's, it's right down and see it better. So, when you got that new terminal figured out, pretty much, still giving troubles.
Let's model around with it.
Gosh, they're computers. I mean, everything is a computer now.
It's very complicated.
Yeah.
Apparently really vulnerable or something. Thanks, mommy.
For the old schoolings?
Yes. May some more. Love it.
It's pretty zipp.
Actually, it's starting out on the second page.
We're looking at the second page yourself?
Start out on the second page. And then administration.
Administration.
Salaries.
This is mine.
Oh, yours is right there.
This is, this is 2022. Is that right?
Yep, and there's 2024.
Cool, thank you.
In case you wanted a whole one.
Second page.
Um, mine looks different than ours.
On the second page.
Yeah, mine looks totally different. Yours does, right? Have we said salaries?
Are the revenues first?
No.
No, but yours is different.
Yeah.
Mine is different.
Yours is, his is different than mine.
Uh-oh.
Mark's is different than mine.
Yours is mine is the same.
That is so weird.
Yeah, mine... Yeah, so it's totally different. Mine goes to general fund.
See, this one looks different.
Yeah, mine goes to general fund.
Looks like I got shrunk or something. Yeah, it's all different.
It's like I've got comp to see the lines.
There it is. But even it's not on here anymore. It says, doesn't say administration on this one.
No, it doesn't. Salaries under general fund, but no administration.
Is this what yours looks like?
Yeah. What is that number?
150, 100, 10, 1050.
Oh, it's right here. It's just worded different.
Yeah, mine says general fund.
Mine says general fund, too.
Doesn't say, yeah, administration.
And the numbers are different. They're under, oh, no, they're the same.
They all start with, oh, 1050, 1060, 1080.
Yeah, no, these numbers are the same. It's just wrote out.
Yeah. I bet that they, because I've heard it exactly what I have here.
1050, 100 is what we're looking at.
But we updated Cassell, so that must be the new way they're doing it.
So, we'll have to go by the number, not that...
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you talk to us, tell us which number we're on.
All right. Okay. You ready, everybody ready?
So, 1050, 100?
Okay. We start out 1050, 100. Shall I just go down and get the, come up? I'll just give you the 100, 105, 130 on down the line.
Okay.
Come out that way. Okay, 100 is, uh, uh, 55,000.
So, you're keeping it at 55?
Yes. And, uh, uh, 105 is 6,000. 130 is 3500. Or 30, 30, 35 is 4,500. 140 is 4,500. And, uh... 1,000 for 145. And, uh, 150 is 13,000. And 200 is 10,000.
Ooh, so you're doubling that one?
Doubled it.
Why is that?
Because you got legal fees and with this, uh...
Lawsuit.
Lawsuits and they're taking a lot of money to use the failure or then it costs.
This can't be Jim's lawyer call Jennifer and then we get charged. So...
We get charged for them calling her? Why?
It's just the way it works. Because she's asking about city stuff and roads and when they were doing that road, what was it? The road validation?
Yeah.
And everything? We, we have to pay that when she goes and she has to do stuff for it. So... So, we figured we would just go 10K because if, and we're calling her more often at city council meetings. And so, I just would rather be safe because I don't know where all this stuff is going. You know? I mean, it's, it's okay because we need that information, that legal information.
Right, and I'm just asking so we are clear about all of us are on the exact same page as why it's being doubled.
Okay, 205 is 8,000. And 210 is 3,000. And 215 is 3,000. And, uh, 220 is 1,000. 225 is 2,500. And, uh, 230 is 6,000. And 235 is 2,000. And 240 is 4,000. And 245 is 4,000. So, return of age.
We have one more on our hands.
We have one more, 250 at the bottom of ours? Yeah, 250. For building repairs? That's okay, he's getting there.
Yeah.
Okay.
His is just on a different page.
So, we're literally now the same page.
All right. Yeah, building for 250 is 3,500.
Oh, and double on that one?
And, yes, and, uh, 255 is 2,500. If you get... And, uh, 260 is 6,000. And, uh, 285 is 2,000.
Okay, just so you know, the next number should be, because I have created it. For the lease, we have to have that separate.
For the copier.
For the copier.
Yeah.
Um, so I created an account that's 1050, 260, if you want to write that in. We're going to do 2,500.
So, even though it says 286, this can be 260?
It's going to be 286.
Oh, mine has it on there.
Oh, okay.
It's always going to be 286.
Yes. Right now it's at nothing because, like, it's part of the general fund, so it'll be okay.
And so, the, the tools is, uh, that's 290 is, my company numbers right is 700.
You want to take one of these, will this help you?
Maybe that's what I need to do.
There you go. That way you can see it better.
Yeah, okay, then, uh, uh, 295 is 3,000. And, uh, 300 is 1,000. And 205 is 6,000.
305, you mean?
305.
305. And 310 is 2,500. And, uh, 315 is 1,000. And 330 is 500. And 333 is 100. And 334... Is, uh, is 1,000.
$50 to 1,000.
So, 100, 100, that's what it is.
Oh.
I, I forgot to mark here.
Okay, so 100, not 1,000.
Doubled. Yeah.
It's a big difference.
Yeah. Say, oh.
Okay. Uh, 335 is 600. 337 is 6,000.
Whoa.
Whoa.
6,000 for Christmas lights?
That's what he's got.
That's what, that's what, that's what...
Yeah, that needs to be different. And about something neat to, like, go across Main Street here.
Main Street. We're only going to do the main streets.
Downtown, Boston, Main Street, so pretty.
Yeah, who wanted to get maybe, you'd get better stuff that, on the poles when you're at downtown stuff. So...
And the lights don't...
Well, because at a 2,000, we can't really buy something that's going to be going across.
These commercial things are...
Yeah, there's like about five grand.
We're going to go back through all these, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have more.
Like five months. Nothing gets approved until like July, August, so we got plenty of time to think about it.
Yeah, you can look at it over and suggest changes.
339 is 500. And 466 is 500. And 455, or 555 is 300. And 800 is 10,000. And...
Uh, wait a second. 800 is 10,000, right?
300, 300...
Yeah, capital, all you use to put in your 10,000.
And capital outlay is 10,000. And, uh...
So, just a second. Uh, capital outlay is like, it's kind of, uh, if I'm understanding correct, like, we can, we use that one time for buying the new pickup and stuff like that.
Right.
Is that anything that we can depreciate?
Yeah.
So, like if something breaks?
Yeah.
Um, they just consider it a capital outlay and then the account is moving where it needs to go?
Yeah.
With journal entries.
It saves, kind of, kind of thing.
Cool.
Yeah.
For new fire truck.
Sure, you get on that.
Okay, so... Can we go down here to the library?
Uh, 245, or 1060, 245, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
245 is 3,500.
Hold on, I'm going to write library side, that's so we know where we're at because it's all of our system.
Everything's a general...
It doesn't tell us any separation of what we're looking at. Yeah, it's really weird.
When they update it.
Okay.
Yep.
There are two.
Yeah.
We're on two.
260, 245.
This one is 2,000. And, uh, 255 is 2,000. 260 is 2,000. And capital outlay is 1,000.
I'm sorry, what was the building we're here? Because Justin was talking to me.
Uh, 2,000.
I'm just blaming you. I'm just teasing.
Okay, thanks. You're a clever. Pay attention.
So, this next one is 2... Public safety?
Yeah.
1070, 140?
Public safety. It's mostly the fire department.
Okay.
Is, uh, 140 is 500. Uh... 225 is 2,200. And, uh, 230 is 600. And, uh, Vista 245 is 1,300. And, uh, and, uh, 250 is... 10, 10,000.
Is that for them to have new gear or something, or what? For the PPE?
Personal protective, yes.
Well, I know what the PPE is, but is that for new gear and stuff for you guys?
It costs about $3500 a person.
Right.
So, 255 is 2,500. 260 is 5,000. 265 is 1,400. And, uh, 270 is 2,500. And, uh, 275 is 5,000. And, uh, 280 is 14,000. And then there would be a skip down here to the internet. 290 is $100. And then, go down here to the police. 375 is 12,000.
Hold on, we skipped like four of them. Okay, so we're...
Yeah, those are vehicle repairs, remember? I just kind of...
I, I see that.
That's why I was just verifying.
He was skipping. That's all.
No.
It's okay.
Because that's why, it's kind of part of the 14,000.
It's fine.
And, uh, 800 is 200. Okay, now, we can go down to the streets. It has, uh, 35,000. And, uh, 130 is 3,000. 135 is 4,300. And, uh, 140 is 4,000. And, uh, couple pages turn. 145 is 100. And, uh, 150, 8,000 for medical insurance. Okay. 210 is 2,200. And, uh, 225 is 450. 240 is 4,000. 245 is 15,000. And, uh, 255 is 500. 260 is 3,000. 265 is 10,000. 270 is 5,000. And 271, that's 27,500. And, uh... 280 is, uh, 3,500. And, uh, 285 is 500. And, uh, 400 is 8,000.
Is that going to be enough, do you think?
I have a question while we're talking about gravel. Because I know that we get mag rock and we didn't hardly use any.
We ordered one load this year.
Okay.
Um, but they won't deliver it here anymore. They won't dump it in here.
Oh, we got to go get it ourselves?
No, they dumped it down at the wastewater plant.
Oh.
So, I'm going to haul that, what's, we did get, that's left down there into here. But that's all we ordered was one load.
I was just wondering if there was a way to save what we had, so, for next year.
Yeah, I, I tried to use that. I want to get to the back.
Right.
Because it kind of loses its effectiveness over time, I think. So, I wanted to use it all that we could, so...
Got you.
Yeah, we only ordered one load.
But do you think, you know, I mean, if we have a bad year, do you think 8,000 will cover us?
Yeah.
It's okay.
The new spreader doesn't put down as much. It puts it evenly, but it doesn't put down as much.
Right. Nice.
Okay, everybody can move on.
Yeah.
Uh... 405 is 5,000.
We wanted to talk, wait.
Maybe a plus.
Dick, we wanted to talk to Justin about that sidewalk thing, too. Remember? Because we didn't really have to go through this too hot and heavy because I know he wanted to fix sidewalks and whatever we can afford this year and, and we do want to do it next year. We were just wondering, 5,000 okay, or should we go up a little bit more? I mean, we don't know.
I, I don't know. I heard that con, that poured, um, concrete was $750 a yard.
Ouch.
I don't know if that's true, but we need to find out. My brother's going to be, go pouring a foundation and that's what he told me. So, if so, that kind of, you know, we can only do a small, small sections of, at a time.
Yeah.
Well, you can't, like, the sidewalks up here, they got to be tore out and done.
Yeah, they have to be redone, yeah.
Because you can't cut it off and, because they're too thin, they do break up.
Yeah, so when we, at the city council meeting, I have a proposal from the concrete company, the cutting company. They did, they surveyed the whole town and they found 46 trip hazards and they gave us an estimate for fixing them all. We don't have to fix them all. We can just fix the ones we want and fix them all. Um, and then they also identified all of the sidewalks that are compromised. So, any that are, any that are crumbling, they marked on there, they won't fix them, they can't. But they, I, it's kind of like having a free engineering survey that's for us that they already did. So, it might be easier for us to get an estimate, since we know which ones are bad now and need replaced.
Well, yeah, you got, you got up there and down here at the post office and...
Those blue numbers were, Dick. It was from that outfit.
Yeah, there's blue numbers. They numbered every single crack.
Yeah.
And there's, I have a map to show you, but it's like, I can't believe they ate.
So, did you go, see?
They did fourth, state, main. I think that's, that's all I asked them to do. I did ask them, I don't know if they went down third and up third. I don't know. I'll have to look at the map, but I'll be chuffed.
Well, a lot of the sidewalks, uh, like, went across the street on the school.
I think they did that one.
Get needs.
Yeah.
Get needs to...
The one in front of Granny's pantry, that's bad.
Yeah.
That is really bad.
Yeah, so...
So, I figured if we could get an estimate on the whole, on how much, we can maybe split it up between years. So, like, if it's, you know, 30,000, we can do 15,000 this year coming budget for next summer and stuff like that. That would divide it out. But we'll have to wait and see, so let's wait on that one.
Okay.
So, we're on the 410?
Yeah, 410 is 3,700. 415 is 3,500. 420 is 2,000. And, uh, 430 is 2,000. And, uh... Have you checked on that new mower?
I drove, I drove out and added to Hal Cam, talked to him, and they moved. Brian and I drove up there. They're down by Ferguson now, so they're down in, in North Boston.
Yeah.
So, the next time I go down, I was going to stop in.
Yeah. Yeah. We got...
But I think that it's the same guy working there and should be about the same trailer, so...
Well, we got 5,000.
Okay.
I thought I've never asked because...
Well, and that'll be for next year.
Okay, not this.
Not this year. This year, she have 4,500. So, if it's roughly around the same, if it's close to 10,000, we're still...
Okay.
That'd be great. We just kind of figured we could estimate if it's going to be a little bit more, you know, a couple hundred every year.
So, uh, 701 is 400. And, uh, 702 is 4,000. And 705 is 35,000.
35,000?
No, 3,500.
3,500.
Okay.
I guess I have to mark off any of them. Okay. And capital outlay is 5,000. Okay, the park. 100 is 6,000. And, uh, 130 is 500. One forty is a thousand. One forty-five is.
Two forty, two forty-five?
Five, is, two forty-five is three thousand six hundred. Let's see.
Two fifty.
Yeah, two fifty is three thousand five hundred. Two fifty-five is eight hundred. Two sixty.
Oh shit.
Two sixty, okay.
You sounded like a girl. Just not playing.
Uh, two sixty is one thousand. Two sixty-five is ten thousand five hundred.
For equipment repairs?
Equipment repairs.
Jumping from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand five hundred?
That seems like a good jump.
That's a huge jump.
A huge jump.
Especially cause.
You didn't probably use the eight hundred last year.
We have such a, we have a fairly new, new fleet.
Yeah.
What did you have, run, run down, Bonnie?
I had the same.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, and four thirty is two thousand. And four fifty is one thousand. Four fifty-two is seven thousand. And four fifty-three is two thousand. And four fifty-four is four thousand. And seven oh five is fifteen hundred. And eight hundred is two thousand.
So Justin, jump in anywhere here with the water and wastewater, if you.
So, we don't, are our water sales, do we have to wait for those or those?
Yeah, we, we skip down here to the salaries.
Under.
Twenty-eight-five, one hundred?
Yes, one hundred is forty-four thousand. And one oh five is three thousand. One thirty is four thousand. And one thirty-five is six thousand five hundred. And one forty is three thousand. One forty-five, two thousand. And one fifty is eight thousand. And two hundred is one thousand. Two oh five is seven thousand five hundred. And two ten is six hundred. Two fifteen is five hundred. And two twenty-five is four thousand. Two thirty is four thousand two hundred. And two thirty-five is two thousand. Two forty is four thousand two hundred. And two forty-five is twenty-one thousand. And two fifty-five is two thousand five hundred. And, and two sixty is ten thousand. Okay, then we have, two sixty-five is six thousand. Two seventy is two thousand. Two seventy-two is twenty-one thousand. Two seventy-five is seventy-five thousand. And two eighty is two thousand. And two eighty-two is two thousand five hundred. Two eighty-five is two thousand two hundred. Two eighty-seven is six thousand two hundred.
Uh, Dick, I think we need to go up on that, cause the prior year we went over by, um, of six thousand, by three hundred. I think maybe we should crank it up to seven.
Doing extra test, testing though?
Well, and we still might be, I don't know, but a lot of the time it's because of ANITAC.
Well, that's just treatment supplies.
Oh, treatment?
So treatment supplies are the chemicals that we buy.
So are they more expensive?
Well, they're, they're always going up, but, so.
Maybe we should stick at seven thousand?
Yeah, I think seven thousand would be.
Realistic.
And can we go back up to the water line system repair? How come we never even hit ten thousand, but we keep it at seventy-five? Year after year, I'm like, I think we used to have like a hundred and fifty and now we, and I knocked it down to seventy-five. Cause with the new system, I think we should knock it down to fifty and just see how it goes from there. Because if we have some big catastrophe that's gonna cost us, it's gonna be way over seventy-five, then we'd have to open the budget anyway. So, I mean, what's your thoughts on it? I mean, I don't know what the water line system repairs are considered, you know, what do you?
Well, I don't know if those valves, remember last year we had those valves?
Oh, that valve is expensive.
It's like five thousand a valve, and so this year, I'm going to have them come and, I mean, we only did like four last year and there's like twelve. So I'm gonna try to get the other.
But that was only six thousand.
I thought it was more than that, but, I mean, maybe I was afraid. I think I was afraid to do anything because it was so expensive, but I can't realize.
Well, just because, well, when you think thousands, it always seems like hundreds of thousands to you guys, but it's like.
I don't mind if you take it down to fifty thousand, but, you know, if something happens, like you say, I, you know.
We would have to open the budget anyway, you know, so.
Well, and it's still seventy-five thousand in your budget right now.
Yeah, seventy-five now, so.
Until, you know, the end of September.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I just thought we could try it, see, you know.
Oh, well, oh, nevermind, it's something else.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe try and use as much of that. Get stuff done, so then we, we shouldn't have, hopefully, catastrophic if we drop it to fifty or whatever, just, I don't know.
I don't know where this falls, I don't necessarily see a category, but, uh, you know, we had the mower reservoir cleaned and inspected. And while I was up there, the guy said, oh, it looks great, blah blah, you know, everything's good. Well, they sent us a report, which I wanted to pray, cause the council, they sent us a report that's saying it needs some work done. That it needs to be sealed inside and they found a few things, and so I didn't have a chance to.
We have a category called reservoir cleaning, but, but for like.
Reservoir repair, I don't know.
And we could, we could create the count called reservoir repair if we wanted to. That way we could categorize it and it would be better. Cause you don't wanna put it under cleaning because it's really not cleaning.
It's not cleaning, it's something different. And I guess it wouldn't be under water line system repair, but, but I mean.
Under well repair?
No, I guess not.
It wouldn't be under well repair, would it?
Well, no.
No, I think so.
It may have to be repairs on.
Reservoir.
On reservoir. Can make it.
Hey, we're on three hundred.
We're on three hundred. Are we down here?
Maybe three oh two.
Three oh two. A hundred dollars. And three oh five is three thousand six hundred. Appreciation expense is seven thousand six hundred seventy, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
We really can't change this, um, depreciation expense or amortization. Like I said, the auditors do that yearly with their journal entries that I have to do year-end, so.
And six oh five is sixty-five thousand eight hundred and forty. That leads all the way. And testing is, six twenty is five thousand three hundred. And six twenty-five is one thousand.
Dick, can we go back for testing?
Testing.
Yes. So that would be ANITAC and we have it this year is five thousand, last year we spent six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So maybe we should go up to seven, or seventy-five hundred?
Now, that's what I have, is seven thousand two hundred.
You said fifty-three hundred, you told us fifty-three hundred, so it is, it is seventy-five hundred, seventy-two hundred? That's what he asked for down, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Testing.
Now we're down on six thirty.
Down to six thirty.
Yes.
Okay, two thousand. And six thirty-five is twenty-five hundred. And seven oh five is six hundred. And seven ten is two thousand. Seven fifteen is three thousand. Seven twenty is four thousand. Eight, eight hundred is fifteen thousand.
Do you want us to get the revenue up on top?
For eighty-seven one hundred?
Thirty-eighty-seven one hundred.
Okay, we got the sewer funds. Is.
No, we're skipping down to, skipping down to eighty-seven one hundred.
Okay. That's one hundred, it is forty-five thousand. And one oh five is three thousand five hundred. One thirty is four thousand two hundred. And one thirty-five is five thousand two hundred.
Now, you went over on that one too, you wanna change that one?
I'd like to.
Cause you're over four thousand dollars, or thirty-nine hundred dollars.
You know, I'm not.
To the person.
To the person.
No.
Really, but it says ninety-one hundred and then it says budgeted fifty-two hundred.
Well, see, mine is different. Mine shows ninety-one oh one and yours shows fifty-two, and yours is showing forty-one fifty-two.
Yeah, his is showing forty-one fifty-two two.
Mine's fifty-two.
So you, you mark, Dick, you have the same ones, and Nick and.
Yeah. Whatever your name was.
Whatever your name is.
I couldn't think of.
I don't know why I lost it.
Can't go with it.
Sorry.
Yeah, so there must be something weird, cause yours says ninety-one hundred.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so is mine.
Yes, yeah.
But his says forty-one hundred.
Yeah, that's what his says.
So should we cross out the ninety-one for forty-one?
Yeah, I guess.
Is it forty-one even?
Forty, forty-one fifty-two oh two. And I won't argue us staying fifty-two hundred. Or like, well, you're four valves, no, don't worry.
Okay, one forty is seventeen hundred. And one forty-five is two hundred. One fifty is fifteen thousand. And two hundred is three thousand five hundred. And two oh five is seven thousand nine hundred. Two ten is three thousand. Two fifteen is three thousand. And. Two twenty is six thousand. Two twenty-five is two thousand five hundred.
Two thirty?
Okay, two thirty is four thousand five hundred. Two thirty-five is six hundred. Two forty is three thousand seven hundred. Two forty-five is a thousand three hundred. And two fifty is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-two. And two fifty-five is two thousand. And two sixty is five thousand five hundred. And two sixty-five is two thousand. Two seventy is three thousand. Uh, two seventy-two is a hundred thousand. And two eighty is two thousand. Two eighty-two is ten thousand. Two eighty-five is five hundred. Two eighty-seven is thirteen thousand.
Now, um, we spent, last year we spent twenty-one thousand dollars on treatment supplies.
I have twenty-five thousand three, thirty-eight.
That's right.
You have twenty-one thousand?
I have twenty-one thousand.
So how many of these things are messed up?
I have no idea.
So for you and Nick and I, they have twenty-one thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
So that's what we spent, we're only budgeting thirteen?
That's what I'm saying. Um, and because, you know, you buy the big gallons. Fifty-five gallon drums, remember, and they're like three, almost four thousand now. So what I'm saying is, should we go up to twenty-five K?
Twenty-one thousand sixty-five.
Well, this will be for the year after October, right?
Right.
Cause I was hopefully trying, gonna try to not order more. Like if we can, if the construction starts.
Yeah, and we don't know what's going to happen for treatment supplies. So I think we should just be safe and do twenty-five K if we don't use it because of the new. But we're like in the middle of the whole improvement there, so I don't know, like with the wastewater. The last couple of years, we've been able to knock down some of those, um, budgets because with the new plant, we're not spending as much money. Repair, treatments, like, you know what I mean?
I would say the chlorine has gone up, because during COVID, there was a shortage.
Right.
And they were asking all operators, can you get your chlorine? So I would say it's, it, I, yeah, it's probably the. So I would say it's, it, I, yeah, it's probably the chlorine and the degreaser and, you know,
Right.
the sodium and chlorine task to be used. Probably one of those things have gone up a little bit is probably why we're over.
So we want to go to twenty-five?
Yeah, we could go to twenty-five.
Because we can always knock it down if it doesn't happen.
I think I do.
I just want to be safe because we don't know what's going to happen with, when they start with the wastewater treatment plant. What, how much stuff is going to come out of our budget?
Okay, three oh five is three thousand five hundred. Five hundred is six hundred thousand.
We could probably skip down to what? You said down to six twenty? You said the other ones we couldn't change?
Right.
Six twenty, let's get down to six twenty.
We should sign it.
Six twenty is six thousand. Six twenty-five is one thousand. Six thirty is six hundred. Six. Six forty is four thousand five hundred. One oh five is four fifty. And seven fifty is five thousand. Seven fifty five is one thousand.
Sorry. We forgot to, yeah. We didn't even think about our.
We're doing the eighty-one one hundred.
Salaries. Okay, salaries, uh, the one hundred is twenty thousand. One oh five is a thousand. One thirty is three thousand six hundred. And one thirty-five is three thousand two hundred. And one forty-five is three thousand. And two ten is good one. Two ten is four thousand. And two forty-five is six thousand two hundred. And two eighty-five is five hundred. Three oh five is three thousand five hundred. And six twenty is ninety thousand.
Okay, so hold on. On theirs, Nick, uh, Nick and Judy and I, they have eighty-seven thousand, twenty dollars and seventy cents.
Or question expense?
Yeah.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty-seven thousand, twenty dollars and seventy cents.
I have a different number from that.
I know.
That's what I have.
We have ninety-four thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have ninety-four, but we need to change it to eighty-two.
Eighty, I thought you said eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, sorry, eighty-seven. And then he's changing it to ninety.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to change all these and then I will call, because I want to find out why everybody's different. Because like I said, when was it last week we did an update? Yeah. So, yeah, they messed with them.
Yes, yes.
And then hopefully it'll go by quick.
Hello, how are you? Are you Sean?
I am Sean, yes.
We should sign in.
Be your guest. One word?
I think so. I have to stop for this. This will be our guest.
That's for a permit. Yes, thank you.
Buddy.
It's not a mint.
That's a mint.
I thought it was mint.
I know, right?
I was wondering what my name was, so it's off there. Oh, sure. It's a chocolate. Oh, I have M and Ms. Okay. It's okay. Oh, my goodness. Here, maybe there's something in there. That's a caramel.
Ooh, I'll say caramel.
These are dogs. There's gotta be something in there. Hey, how about that? Great touchy.
First, I want to say good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. To commemorate our first time, our city council ever starting a meeting with a pledge of allegiance, I wanted to do something just a little bit special. I'm like, oh, what could that be? I was able to contact the PSA. Don't you say no. Boy Scouts of America, but I got girls, we got girls. So it was my surprise. So we'd be honored if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
For like stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should sign it.
That's a little dry for ten seconds, huh?
That's okay, that's okay, it's perfect.
We can say words. We'll have to sing next time. So the, the, this is for the increased sewer rates. This is something the council voted on last year. We're looking for sewer rates to increase every six months by four dollars and fifty cents. That's the only thing that's increasing at this time. But we're required in our public hearing because the amount of increase.
Are there any comments? You said it goes up every few months, right?
Six months.
Every six months up four fifty, okay. And that's for three years? Was it for three years?
Um, the discussion when someone was here was, um, if, if everything goes as planned, then construction will be finished by, I think, summer of twenty twenty-six. So the plan would be to have that sewer fund holding on to the money so we can start making the first payment at that time.
Okay, then. So I guess we're ready for number five.
Yes, and make a motion to accept the minutes from February of twenty twenty-four. Can I sneak it in?
Got a question on the north forty. Why is it always you, Clifford?
That's the only place I shop.
Is Western State here as well?
What is it?
Western State.
Uh-uh. That's Justin.
Justin.
What's happening?
Western States.
Western States.
Cat Miller.
We had two hoses fixed on the back end. The one, the cable was, the actual metal was showing and it blew. And so Clifford and I tried to get it off and fix it ourselves, but low and behold, you needed special wrench to get off the hose. And so we called the workers and they came out. And then they also fixed another one that was bad, so. I don't know, how much was it? Did it?
Fifteen hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
I had seventeen, oh, there was credit. Does yours show the credit?
Yeah, mine shows the credit.
So they also built up the, and everything. He said that it would, it wasn't, it was made as normal. But I got a question for you. Have you heard that the seavelle costs seven thousand dollars to get now?
Huh?
Uh, the last I heard it was thirty-five hundred, but I, I, look, it's not.
It's not?
No. So the fee, the fee increase went from fifty dollars for the, uh,
That's what he does.
the testing, the road test part. And went to, I think it was a hundred and twenty. But it's not thirty-five hundred. That's thirty-five hundred if you go through school, but you don't need to go through school in Idaho. So, yeah.
I'm glad you know because, yeah.
Yeah, I, I went over this with, uh, when we were doing our contract, so. Should really be, like I said, your permit and then the testing page for the examiners, I think a hundred and so. Any other questions on bills? I moved to accept payables for the month of February.
Sorry, I'm trying to alter.
Dan Smith?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Smith. I'm the technology director for the Kendrick joint school district. With me this evening is Dorrie Nelson, the principal at Juliet Elementary School. And we would like to have the city of Juliet continue to be a part of the Leatoc County Broadband Coalition. Joining the Leatoc County Broadband Coalition was done in conjunction with the city of Juliette, at that time Vicky Witt, the city of Kendrick, Rose Norris, and the Kendrick Joint School District, Steve Kirkland, Don Parks, and myself. As with all of the other anchor institutions in Leatoc County, this coalition was put together to help provide a clear path forward for broadband access for Leatoc County, especially rural Leatoc County. Because of the work of this coalition, we have secured money for the first phase of this project. And continued cooperation by the communities which with the Kendrick Joint School District serves will allow us to better access broadband services and digital access slash digital equity programs in the future. At this time, I've been working with both Vicky and Rose that if there'd been anything coming up in the broadband coalition meetings, I had briefed all of them about that. At this point, the way kind of things are moving with that project, I don't see any impact on the city at all. But we do need your support as a part of the larger coalition for us to be able to secure funding moving forward. So I was just hoping you guys could take a chance and if you had any questions about the broadband coalition, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. Yes, sir?
What is digital equity?
Okay, so the broadband money is actually in two parts. The first one is the infrastructure, and that's what we're currently working on, on getting into place. I do have a complete presentation that I actually gave to the Timber Plus Economic Development Council. That was about two weeks ago. And St. Mary's for Benoit County to start up their own broadband coalition, which is what they're doing right now. They're actually fast-tracking theirs too, so that way they can secure this money as well. So that's the first round of money. The second round of money is digital access. The second round of money is digital access and digital equity. And it's also another very large pot of money. And what that is, is to give, like, for example, places for senior citizens to go to do telehealth and have people that can help them with their, like, if they have an iPad. You're gonna need technical support to deal with this. Job opportunities, how to get online, how to help these people with them online. So it's in support of things like libraries, but it's also part of a much larger plan that we're also working on. I also sit on the other side, because we have a stake in that as well. The school district's gonna hopefully be able to provide some support on these types of things that we'll be doing with that second pot of money. We gotta get this stuff in the ground first and then start feeding it out. Then we can start helping people with the access to this. So that will be something that we will definitely need, the city's help, in both Juliet and in Kendrick when we get to that point. But they're in the first stages of that, so.
So last month of the year, sorry, last month, we were told that there would possibly be towers and so forth installed in Juliet. Are you saying that there wouldn't be?
Has nothing to do with that. What we have to do is, I've got students that, take it for what it will for COVID. The one issue that I had during the entire time of COVID, we were, we closed school on Wednesday, and Thursday we were teaching online. We were one of the few districts in the state that was actually prepared for something like this. That took a lot of coordination and a lot of planning. The problem that I had was, I've got plenty of students with plenty of devices and no way for them to get online and learn. So that was kinda the precipice behind this, was to get it to where, okay, if we've got students that are in rural Leatok County, those places between Leland, up in these other stretches that have been told by major carriers that you can't get access here, we're gonna really try and come up with a solution that you absolutely can have access, because you need to have the access to the same tools that somebody in Meridian has. There's no reason at this day and age why we can't have that here.
So what you're needing from us is to sign those resolutions, correct?
Correct. We just gotta make sure. It makes it easier for the coalition to go to the Department of Commerce or whomever it happens to be and say, look, the entire, all the anchor institutions, the cities, the schools, the hospitals, the libraries, the university, we're all in one accord on this. We have a plan that we want to go moving forward. It makes it very easy to take that to them and for them to go, yep, everybody's on board with this, we're good to go. And like I said, to the city so far, there's been minimal impact, if anything.
Can you connect up to Starlink satellites?
Starlink's a completely separate service.
I know, but can you connect up to it without an option?
Through the broadband coalition? No. And the reason for that is because I currently have Starlink at my house. That's the only option that I have. Even though I can show you the map from pre-COVID and post-COVID, that said, pre-COVID, it said that there was twenty-five-three, which is the standard, twenty-five mags down, three up. They said that they had that at my house. And I said specifically, no, you don't. And there was no way for me to go to the feds and say, this is completely false. So after COVID happened, the feds went back and said, okay, we're gonna have you do tests at your house and tell us what your broadband looks like. I can show you the maps now, that it went from all blue in Leatok County to almost entirely red. Now, as an IT professional, I can tell you that terrestrial broadband, meaning anything that's put in the ground, is guaranteed to work over long stretches of time. Fiber that went in now, you change the adapters on the end, and you can increase service across those things. It's much easier to manipulate. Satellite technology, although it's great, it's a stop-gap measure. So I'm never gonna stop fighting to have broadband access terrestrial at my house, even though I have Starlink.
Right, just when it could, it'd be something that could be used. As Sarah was saying, that the students couldn't get it.
If we're gonna be doing something like that, that will probably, it would have to be extremely remote, because the whole push behind this is we have one-time monies. We're never gonna have money like this ever again.
So you're not considering it because it's one-time money?
No, what we're planning on doing is putting as much in the ground as we possibly can. And for the ones that are gonna be difficult to get to, then we do wireless out to those locations until we can get them terrestrial. It's the same thing like having a power. It was such an important thing in America's history that we went through in the rural electrification project. We all paid for that to get all that stuff done. We have the infrastructure in place to do that now. That is the exact same thing that we're trying to do.
And one thing you might do, when you talk about the benefits of having these poor little senior citizens going to, most of the senior citizens, if not all of them around here, have their own computers, and their very computers, including. And, you know, it isn't a very good example.
For some, I actually was stopped at Phil's by someone who said, you know, I have this iPhone, and yet I don't know how to use, like, a majority of it. It's just, it's kind of a pocket weight.
Yeah, but we've got computers at home.
But I wanna have the opportunity to take students from the district, and with this digital access money, if we have it signed as part of the coalition, to be able to help them with senior citizens and saying, this is how you work a computer. Because, trust me, in my line of work, I deal with a lot of people who have difficulty operating a computer on a day-to-day basis. It keeps me in a job.
Senior citizens is people, that's what I'm getting at. It's not senior citizens, because all the ones I know are pretty savvy.
Excellent.
You said that, you said that the library is already involved in this, right?
Correct.
That's where a bunch of people already go anyhow. So why would there need to be an additional place, is what you were talking about? Some place to come together or something like that, to teach these senior citizens?
You can't, we can have it at the library, we can have it at the school. We can have it at all these other different places. But again, that's the digital access side, that's not the broadband portion. That's, we haven't got, they haven't started putting any final plans in place on that one yet. That is still in the initial phases. So broadband's different, they're two totally different things.
You talked about the terrestrial.
Correct.
Does that include the 5G towers?
No, because that's not part of the entire plan. 5G towers have, now, if a carrier wanted, because now we had access to data, because there's two things you need, you need power and you need data. And those are the two things that most of our rural areas don't have. And so I can tell you that when we replaced the radios for the school district, terrain was one of my worst things to have to deal with. Try going up to Texas Ridge, Cedar Ridge, and some of those dead spots that are up there, isn't there impossible to get signal? We've got signal through most of that.
I have one, just some minor questions. So broadband coalition, everything's done, the job's done, everyone's got this, leading to their place of residence. Is this a paid service?
That's, so the thought behind that is, we have to get the initial ring put in first. Then from there, it's like Porta Wilma, Porta Lewiston, you have somebody that's gonna manage that project. And then you're, they're able to sell out those pieces to various vendors. So you would actually have somebody like First Step, who would actually be able to be, to compete in the market, because they're buying off the exact same pipe that everybody else is.
Right now, we just gotta get the track laid.
Yeah, that is correct.
I would like to make a motion to approve the NYU for broadband projection, resolution 2024-01.
One second.
All in favor?
It's up to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, God, same, watch for the deer. I really appreciate it. Take care.
So these, the rate fees are the ones we do every year for, like, the...
Yeah, the resolution that you're looking at is a carbon copy of the one we passed in September, I believe it was, except for the wastewater rate went from forty-three thirty-five to forty-seven eighty-five, which is four dollars and fifty cents. Everything else is the same.
Because it's a resolution, we have to suspend the reading?
Nope, nope. It's just a pass it or don't pass it. If you don't pass it, you can't raise the rates by four dollars and fifty cents.
I move to adopt resolution 2024-02, the fee and rate schedule of previous sewer rates.
I'll second.
All in favor?
So we're onto the female flood?
Female flood, or yes. Yep, yes. I don't know.
It's a synopsis of flood development.
If the water runs down the river, and what do you want to do about it?
I just wanna show you what I have.
You can talk all you want to, but whoever takes care of itself, and you can't get in the river.
We've been contacted by FEMA, and they have this ordinance, they want us updated. Wendy sent it on to the city lawyer, who said that there were a lot of inconsistencies with our current code. So we have to do a lot of changes to it if we went along with it. It's thirty-nine pages long, by the way. So we have quite a history with this thing, starting off with, back in 1979, they had a flood firm app and a report they put up, and it's supposed to be for flood insurance only. Currently, there's nobody getting flood insurance through this program. And if you look under Title XV, Buildings and Construction section of the city code, you'll find that that's where the flood hazard area regulations currently are. And I didn't even know about that till recently, because under planning the zoning, we don't look under building, because that's where the building inspector is. So it's, there are contradictions with some other parts of the city code. It's originally accepted about 1980. Then 1981, there was a public meeting, I've gone through the minutes to get a lot of this. There was a public meeting for a hundred-year floodplain in regards to the water project. The city received a permit from the Corps of Engineers in 1991 for it. So evidently, the fire building is okay for us, but, you know.
That is above that. The fire station and the shop, all that is above the flood.
Well, you haven't looked at their planning maps. You haven't looked at their planning maps.
Yes, I have.
I'm probably the ones that they're using. In April, I agree, it's above. In April, we, ordinance 255, the floodplain was approved. Then ordinance 258, provided restrictions on water service within the hundred-year floodplain. No new structures will get watered. And then in 97, they had asked what current regulations were developed within flood hazard, chapter 15, 16. In part of that, they say, in the different amendments, there's the 4108, that's 1594. Well, we don't have a city ordinance for that number. And I looked at state statutes, there's no ordinance there. So I don't know what that's referring to. But it sounds as though somebody made a typo someplace online, maybe? I don't know. It's hard to find out what we're supposed to be doing, because, so I messed up. Then in 2005, the city paid USK KH a thousand dollars for the survey done for the floodplain, for the building of the new fire truck building. So I haven't seen a copy of that, but it must be someplace around here. Then, under the chapter 17, the floodplain zone, it has, the ordinance 2012, permitted users do not include permanent structures, which is different from what we already had under chapter 15, which is the FEMA thing, which permitted this. And you have to floodproof it too, under the FEMA thing, which means if you have water or sewer, you have to do extra floodproofing. And they talk about fill and everything. Then in 2005, oh, no, that's not. We had different ordinance kit. May 2016, the Allison's requested a water hookup for a home in off Juliette grade in the floodplain. The city received money from USDA twenty-plus years ago with a contract stipulating that no homes located in the floodplain may connect to city water. So now we've got two government agencies saying different things. We've got the FEMA saying you can, under certain conditions. And we've got the USDA, we agreed we weren't going to do it. Then FEMA, that gave the source of the authorization for their ordinance, is being Idaho statute 46-21, -23, and -24. Well, maybe I read -22 first. And that says about, the local governments may adopt floodplain zoning ordinance, and they may adopt them stricter than that. So we are not, we don't have to adopt FEMA, we're free to. It's subject to the availability of adequate mapping of data to properly identify the floodplains, if any, within this jurisdiction. Each local government is encouraged to adopt a floodplain map, you know, it says encourage. And flood management ordinance, which identifies these floodplains, which requires at a minimum that any development in a floodplain must be constructed, so on. But it says, it's not prohibited from adopting more restrictive standards than those in this chapter. Local government is only encouraged to adopt a floodplain map, which we've previously done, and floodplain management ordinance. And then that ordinance from FEMA, in addition, it's thirty-nine pages long, with about six pages worth of definitions of things in there. It would allow permanent structures, is ordinance 2012, that's what prohibits. Nobody has flood insurance through it. Most of the land in the floodplain belongs to either the city of Juliet or Stella Jones. It all says, two and a half pages dealing with the duties of a floodplain administrator. Different things, like issuing permits and seeing that rules acquired, which pretty much almost sounds like you have to be a building inspector or something like that. And the map that FEMA uses is from 1980. There's a historic 1975 map, which as far as I tell, looking at, it actually has the correct boundaries of the city. But when they did the 1981, somehow they took a bite out of the city where the Grants Agriculture Zone is, and that wasn't included in it. And I read the report that goes along with the map, and it says, the city of Juliet has no flood protection. That bike trail is levee, which gives us flood protection. And I looked over at Kendrick to see what they said over there for that one. And I thought, oh, it provides flood protection for Kendrick. And most of downtown Kendrick is, as far as I can tell, is B, the five-hundred-year floodplain. Whereas there are floodplains here, they put down as a hundred-year floodplain. It sounds very confusing to me. And I looked at the state of Idaho site in the Water Department, the digital flood insurance rate map. And it says, both as the official authoritative data source for the regulation of floodplain development. And then the section said about it that doesn't qualify for legal use. And that one shows that the floodplain goes up and covers Kathy Grossclose's house.
You did. You didn't know you lived in a floodplain, did you?
If we get that much water, we're all in trouble.
That would be problems. So.
That would be.
And, you know, it'd be nice if we wound up with a good map in the fall, and could maybe have an ordinance drawn up that would cover what actually we need to have. And then just say that everything else is repealed previously. And maybe even get rid of FEMA, I know, that's up to you. But since nobody's using it, I like to have ordinances that are simple, that people can understand, and they don't have to go through three and nine pages and have an engineering group who can understand. So that's my view on it.
So there's a new flood person?
Yeah.
What, what, what was her title?
I don't remember the name, but the lady that had been in charge of this district, you know, was trying to get this, is leaving here a few days to go to another district, and they'll get a new lady in. And she brought by a gentleman that's gonna be working on updating maps.
Uh-huh. So we're thinking that maybe we just sit down with these new people and just hash it out, like, in plain English, rather than trying to make their resolution fit our, or, sorry, their ordinance fit our code, because it doesn't. And that was the whole issue, was that I sent their ordinance to Ken, because she said, oh, you just have to change some things to Juliette here and there, and then adopt the ordinance. And I thought, okay, so I sent it to Ken, and he said, no. And that's what somebody was talking about, because it conflicts with our, with our current code.
With lots of places.
But no one knows how to make it all go together.
That's why if you do, okay, the new code, it might be good to have a part in there that says that all previous codes without necessarily mentioning which ones are now revoked.
So what I'm getting is that we need to have some sort of ordinance that regulates building within...
that regulates building within the flood zone and the floodplain. The lady, the FEMA lady had said that ours wasn't good enough. Because I sent it, I said, oh, we have that, and I sent it to her, and she's like, no, this won't work.
Well, I don't think she paid attention to things, because when she asked me for an update, and I told her I was going to come down here and try and read our ordinance for the city boundaries, and she said, well, she couldn't understand why I was looking at that, because, and, you know, I mentioned that there was area not included, because any area we added after that, we would be included. But this was the case, area being added after. This is the case of why did they cut out part of the city?
Do you know what part that was?
Yeah, down here at the Grants Agriculture Zone.
Interesting.
And it's even more interesting if you read the report, because the actual data that they use for, there's fifteen years of water gauge being in the river three-point-seven miles north of Juliet. That's the only actual data that they have collected. Everything else was by more or less measuring the height of the, you know, how far the river was going down towards sea level and looking around at the hillsides. And they did, they did, let's, different years that they've been floodwaters, but I don't know how high they've been or anything. And I don't know, to me, I'd like to compare that, the years that they had, the data from the river with, say, the weather, we have the Idaho weather reports going way back. It's, did we have a lot of rain or a little rain that year? That would give you some idea, but I kind of find they reference that they ever did that, I don't know.
It would have nothing to do with that, it's how much snow we get here.
Yes, but if you don't.
And then it warms up, and it starts raining. If there's were right here in the valley, it's where it gets.
But I'm saying, if you don't have much rain or snow up in the mountains, you know, you aren't going to have much floodwaters come down.
And that's since ninety-six, right?
They haven't mentioned anything since then. This was nineteen forty-five to nineteen sixty that they measured it. So, that's it.
Okay, here are a quick question.
Sure.
This actually would affect me. It says, in twenty sixteen, the city received money from the USDA twenty-plus years ago with a contract stipulating no...